It's three o'clock on February 12th, 2018. Calling this workshop to order and welcome all of you here. The first is a presentation by the Citizens Finance Oversight Committee. And we have representatives from them to speak to us now. It's a five-minute presentation. We're honored to have Diana Dill representing that committee today.
Good afternoon, Board Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent, Committee Members, ladies and gentlemen.
The Citizens Advisory Committee has developed and unanimously approved the following presentation for the Board representing the committee's understanding of the public charge and scope of oversight. The presentation was provided to all members for review prior to today's workshop. The committee is comprised of dedicated volunteers and community leaders whose names are listed here on the presentation. The Chair is Bob Christopher and our Vice Chair is John Horn. I am Diana Dill, the Chair of the Communication Transparency Subcommittee. The financial information is reviewed in detail by the Revenue and Expense Deployment Efficacy Subcommittee, whose names are listed here as well. The mission of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee is to identify and measure relevant outcomes and report results to the community. We also want to provide oversight to ensure proper financial stewardship of the operating funds provided by the special election approving a one-mill increase in the school ad valorem tax. The committee goal will focus on measurable and quantifiable relevant outcomes from the use of the funds generated by the one mill. We also want to ensure proper financial stewardship of the restricted funds generated from this increase. The purpose and the expected results of the resolution. The resolution provided for a one-mill per year increase to the school ad valorem millage with the additional revenue to be used specifically for increased student achievement through more instructional time and after-school tutoring. To recruit and retain teachers and staff with competitive salaries. To prepare students for the workforce through expanded career and technical education and STEM programs. And to support charter schools. Some defining terms that the committee has come up with. The resolution revenue. We want to make sure that the revenue generated from the one-mill increase in the school ad valorem millage pursuant to the resolution is specific and referred to as the resolution revenue. The core revenue will be all other general fund revenue for the school district. The committee's interpretation of the resolution. The committee's interpretation is to provide an increased expenditure effort above and beyond the core revenue budget and expenditure responsibility. The resolution revenue should only be used to in... The resolution revenue should only be used to increase the designated expenditure efforts and not for reduced expenditures from the core revenue. And the designated resolution revenue expenditures should be identified as incremental to specific core revenue expenditures, including normal growth, consistent with historical growth in core revenue expenditures. The past budget, budget adjustments, and actual expense trends. In review of the past budget and these expenses, our committee has identified that there's always been a favorable variance for salaries and benefits for instruction as follows. In the 15-16 school year, it was 5.7 million. In 16-17, it was 6 million. And the estimated for last year would have been 10 million. This is based upon the fact that the budget is created with a full staffing expectation, which has never met. And so there is a favorable variance. I'm... Sorry about this. So there is a favorable variance. All budget adjustments should be specifically tracked to avoid the use of the resolution revenue with the favorable variance from the core revenue budget. And here you have it more in detail as well. The recommended action that we have is that you continue to fund salary and benefit increases at the historical rates from the core revenue budget and that you use resolution revenue for the increase in salaries and benefits in addition to the historical increases from the core revenue budget. This will enhance compensation in order to better recruit, retain teachers, and staff with competitive salaries. The proposed Board Resolution. In detail here, we had originally wanted to make this presentation at a Board meeting where you would vote on this, but we asked that you put this on an agenda item for a Board meeting to approve it. What it does is outline the use of the funds, specifically exactly what was stated. It also sets up a model for us to follow with identifying the funds separately so that we can always continually track that funding and that progress for our community. In conclusion, we recommend that you adopt the proposal for the resolution. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
That is all.
Next item on our agenda, our public comments. And I would ask that our Vice Chair, Board Member Messenger, note if anyone has signed up for public comments for this workshop.
Yeah, I have seven people signed up for public comment. I'm just going to go through the normal spiel. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or Board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the Superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the Superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board. This is a business meeting of the school board and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when you're making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The Board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I will start with Mr. Mike Rio. And after Mr. Mike Rio, oh, Brow... Brown...
Bronwyn Beetal.
Browwyn Beetal. See?
It's okay.
I was not even close. I apologize.
Good.
Yep.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Minor, Superintendent Saunders, and honored Board members. My name is Mike Rio and I'm in my 35th year as an educator and leader in Manatee County. I've lived in Manatee County my whole life and am thankful to be part of such a great school system that has given not only myself but my children great opportunity to be successful in their life. I have two goals tonight. The first goal is to respectfully ask the Board not to allow the public to attack our Superintendent or anyone else during Board comment. This has happened on several occasions and it is time to end this disrespectful practice and require participants to abide by the rules. And I appreciate you sharing those rules at the beginning, so I hope that the folks that speak tonight will follow that. My second goal tonight is to influence you to offer our Superintendent an extended 2.5 year contract. I do believe for such a time like this, she is the leader needed to continue to move Manatee County forward. Author and Speaker John Maxwell said that leadership is influence, nothing more, nothing less. I have been blessed to work with some of the best and most influential superintendents in Manatee County since the beginning of my career. Some of those names include Gene Witt, Dan Nolan, Roger Deering, Tim McGonigal, yes, Tim McGonigal, and Diana Green, and now Cynthia Saunders. I've found three characteristics that have been evident in all of these leaders. Faith in God, character, and competence. I have watched each one of these leaders use their character to make hard and sometimes unpopular decisions. I have watched each one of these leaders make mistakes and own them. And not only do they have to own them, but they take public attacks from critics and the press. Great leaders are not perfect, but resilient. Another characteristic of these great leaders was their competence. Each one mentioned had great strengths and they also had weaknesses. I've had the privilege to serve as an administrator in our schools for 25 years and I am currently in my third year as a district-level administrator. I can honestly tell you what I thought I knew, I didn't know at all. I learned that you should never judge a man until you've walked in his shoes. It's a different ballgame. After working closely with Ms. Saunders, I can honestly tell you, she is one of the hardest-working superintendents I've ever worked with. She is also brilliant and a problem solver. I am constantly amazed by how much she knows about every facet of running a school district. Of all the great superintendents I've worked with, she is truly one of the best. My pastor constantly tells me for such a time like this, God has placed me in a position of leadership. As our district faces a new ERP system that is still presenting challenges, safety issues like never before seen, staff shortages, being in the middle of creating the 1920 school year budget, and opening three new schools, I along with many of my colleagues believe that Cynthia Saunders is our leader for such a time like this. Leadership is influence, nothing more, nothing less. I hope you will use your influence tonight to make the best decisions for the students and staff in Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bronwyn.
Thank you.
And after Bronwyn will be Annette Cordelia.
Thank you. I'm Bronwyn Beetal. I'm the Manatee Area President for the United Way Sun Coast. And the United Way Sun Coast believes that everybody deserves equitable access to quality education and opportunities to create the life they imagine for themselves. And the way we work to achieve that goal for our community is to engage with businesses, nonprofits, partners in media, and government, and our school district to fight for the education and financial stability of every person. We have an opportunity in front of us as a district, as a community, as leadership, to ensure the future for our children. And when United Way has a challenge and we ask ourselves the following question, well, how will this impact our children? And right now, we have leadership in place that continues the direction that we have been on. We have partnered with our school district for a number of years and I couldn't say it better than Mike Rio just has. I would agree with everything that he's put forth as well. But as a community, we came together around an initiative to ensure that all of our children will read on grade level. Our school district opened their arms to that initiative. And that is not an easy thing to do and it's not something that we've experienced across the 400 other communities that are engaged in grade level reading success. I want to share with you just how much our Superintendent Saunders has worked with us. When we came to her with an initiative that was going on in our community, there was a question on how do we work with our schools. There were some concerns on whether or not it was the right approach. Rather than saying this is not the right time, she met with our group and she helped us work through the questions that we had, that communities and schools equal success was birthed as a partnership with Comanus, with United Way, with a number of other organizations. Unfortunately, I didn't write down their names, but as part of that partnership. And we are now engaged in another effort to ensure that our children in three neighborhoods surrounding 10 schools are able to read on grade level. Partnerships matter. And how our Superintendent relates to community matters. And the ability to allow community in, to hear community both voice and vision, is an important quality in a Superintendent that we respect, admire, and expect as we're going forward. I would ask that you would maintain the status of where we are, the momentum that we have for our children, and not go into a search that would take us away from our priorities and answer that question of what's most important and how will this benefit our children. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share.
Annette. And after Annette, Shereen Gibson.
Hello, School Board Chairman Minor, School Board Members, Superintendent Saunders, and Staff. As one of the executive directors in our district, I feel compelled to make a statement this afternoon in support of our current Superintendent Cynthia Saunders, an amazing woman and someone I am proud to call my boss. In spite of several unfair attacks against her, she continues to move forward with her plans to make our district stellar. Ms. Saunders' desire has always been and only been to make sure that our district becomes top-notch in the state of Florida, a place of excellence where families can enthusiastically enroll their children in our schools. There are so many reasons why Ms. Saunders should continue to stay at the helm of our district as Superintendent, and today I would like to bring up a few of them. First, her competence, especially when it comes to educating our children. She welcomes all students to our schools confident that they will succeed. She makes sure that students receive the resources and time that they need to meet standards. On a personal note, I moved from New York as a Title I Principal in the South Bronx to Bradenton over 13 years ago with the goal of contributing to a school district that was moving forward and going through an interesting transition. I analyzed statistics and felt confident that this was a place where great teaching and learning was happening. Still, Manatee County was becoming more diverse and accountability to meet the needs of all children had to be the priority, similar to what I encountered in New York as a Title I Principal. I've worked for 10 superintendents over the past 26 years in New York City and Manatee County, which has given me an opportunity to watch them conduct business on many levels. When I first met Ms. Saunders, I will admit, I was a bit intimidated. Just look at and listen to her, so focused and smart. Since then, I have watched and learned from her. She has been a mentor to so many, including me, and exhibits the qualities that I consider to be most important in a Superintendent, including transparency. She is not afraid to admit when something is wrong in an effort to fix it. As a curriculum expert when she arrived in Manatee, she knew we needed to improve our schools and district grades. With patience, she has brought stability to our district when the tendency for many could have been to panic. Ms. Saunders believes in analyzing data to make changes and improvements as necessary without excuses. The results: improved school grades over the past five years and the potential for none of our schools to fall into the D or F status in 2018, 2019. We are on an upward trajectory. To conclude, I cannot describe Ms. Saunders without using the word grace, often under fire. She corrects issues that are problematic, most recently notorious ERP. Since I've known her, Ms. Saunders has not only become an expert in every aspect of the curriculum and operations of our district, but she has an interesting knack for finding and empowering the right people to take care of business. Plus, she has a great sense of humor, which motivates us even when things get tough. Cynthia Saunders has the grit and gut to be the long-term and stable leader of the school district of Manatee County. I believe you will make the right decision this evening for our district, community, and most importantly, for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shereen. And after Shereen is Gretchen Fowler.
Good afternoon, Chairman Minor, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders, and Deputy Superintendent Mr. Wagner, and Staff. My name is Dr. Shereen Gibson, a 22-year veteran of Manatee County School District and 10 of those years as a principal in four different schools. I stand here today amazed at the amount of acrimony that has gone on in the past seven months. It seems that transparency and freedom of speech have been used in a way never intended. It seems that threats and intimidation are commonplace and are directed at our current Superintendent. A Superintendent who specializes in instruction has now gone into operations, called out numerous problems, and put us on a road to solving them. All this while increasing scores, providing opportunity and success for our 50,000 students, their parents, our 4,000 teachers and their families. You've had a seven-month interview with Ms. Saunders. All Board Members have agreed, she's done an excellent job. It is time to act and add stability that you often talk about. Let's be honest with each other. This period has been debilitating to my colleagues and in the district in general. You can end this by making Ms. Saunders our permanent Superintendent so she can work with the naysayers and detractors and bring them together for the common cause of success for our students. For if we all work together, being an excellent district is just within our sight. You've been given the objective facts, so please rely on empirical data that you've received and not conjecture. When I ask a Superintendent, what can I further do to help you on the instructional side, she always says, "Work together for our students." Working together isn't always easy when special interest groups have their own agenda. But if we can all get on the same page, great things will happen and our goals of an excellent district will be accomplished. I'm reminded of something I said many years ago in a newsletter to my teachers. Couldn't you? Couldn't I? Better yet, couldn't we? Thank you.
And after Gretchen was Rodney Jones.
Hello, Chairman Minor and the rest of the group. Thank you for listening to me this morning, or this afternoon, whatever it is. I am in a rush. I have to get out of here because I have to go pick up my son at Rallett down the road, who he has a game at GT Bray, playing soccer. And we will play Lincoln at one point. And because right now, we're 3-0, but I won't continue with that. The other reason that I'm really here is that I'm speaking on behalf of the agenda item of listing of the names for the Parish High School. And what I'm here to say is just a reminder that we are a community. We are here as a group, as a group of people who support each other, support the community, support the schools, support everybody in the area, and we would like to continue with that by supporting our school and having it named for the town that it's located in. And that's what we're focused on. It's not about one person. It's not about just one individual. It's about a group of people who have pride and who are very respectful of each other and want to continue with that. And we can support a school and make this one of the best schools you probably have ever seen if you can bring the community together and not divide us and let us to have, allow us to have our name of Parish, or some form of, as long as Parish is in the name. Thank you.
Chairman Minor, Board Members, Ms. Saunders. And I'm here for a couple of reasons and I want everyone to know, just because someone has a difference of opinion that's based on vetting, based on public records requests, based on witness account, that doesn't mean that they're attacking. That just means that they have a different opinion. We've watched a love fest concerning Ms. Saunders over the last couple of months. I attended December 11th workshop where it was ran by Mr. Minor and all the talk was good. There wasn't any liabilities brought up, never even opened the floor up for liabilities. What are some of the issues with Ms. Saunders in her leadership never once approached. I guess I'm on the underbelly because I get a lot of complaints and we've got some pretty severe complaints, including those 121 students when you're talking about what is best for all students. We've got 121 students that were placed out of the district for the sole purpose, or into homeschool, for the sole purpose of increasing graduation rates. Not only is, I'm sure that's against many laws, but if those IAPs weren't addressed before you kicked those kids out of school, guess what? You've got a problem. You've probably got a bucket of civil rights violations because I'm sure the majority of those children had IAPs. So my logic is if you didn't do the appropriate documentation to put the kids out of school, you wouldn't have, you certainly would have followed what was necessary to address those IAPs before those kids went out of school. We've had other issues with one of the best-kept secrets in the district. I sent everybody an email today with documentation to back that up, was that Ms. Saunders cut off position controls in 27, 2018. I think the Board suffers from, I'm going to say respectful ignorance, because I've even had Board Members request that I send information to them when I'm sending things to the district because they don't know anything, they don't get the information from the staff. So we hear people back here talking about transparency. We hear people back here supporting her. Some of these people that have been supporting her are part of that crew that received that $150,000 worth of raises that no one knew about, not even the Board. And so here we go, talk about transparency and what's best for kids, what's best for all kids is what I'm for. So I'm, we are definitely, I'm speaking as Rodney Jones, I was President of the NAACP. But the NAACP has a unanimous decision not to support Ms. Saunders as the Superintendent. You know, I don't see a lot of teachers or other people from the district supporting here because they are afraid. Because there's several accounts, and I've sent you some today, of people that have been wounded by Ms. Saunders, not only children, because, and everyone knows because Board Members have said it, she has a reputation of being a bully. One of the Board Members has even told me that, well, she's doing better now. Is that something that we want to hear from our Superintendent? She's viewed as a bully. She's viewed as being intimidating and just because I have a different opinion based on fact and staff member account that are afraid to come forward, I speak for them. And so what you have is a culture of fear here. And so what you have is a culture of fear here, whether people like it or not, that's what you have. And it won't get quiet, it'll just get worse if she's appointed. So if you want distraction, appoint her.
Thank you. Dr. Connerd.
Yes, Dr. Richard Connerd, a retired physician in the community. Hello to those of the DIOS, Superintendent Saunders and her senior staff. I don't want to be redundant in my comments. I've been involved in this school district in trying to do a competent volunteer program for the last fifty-one years. All of the highly complimentary things you've already heard about Superintendent Saunders from some very capable individuals who practice in this district and also who are very involved in it, I thoroughly agree with those. I've seen very nice things happen to this district. I've seen very saddening things happen to this district. And my biggest concern right now is we've seen a turnaround occur starting in March of two thousand thirteen. It's had bumps along the way, and there's no question about that, but we're on an upward trajectory of that. And Mrs. Saunders came to this community in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen era, and has been a part of very senior management since that time. We, at the time that Superintendent Mills came, we had nineteen schools who were either D or F. We now have none, and we're seeing a great deal of improvement that continues. I strongly recommend, because of the amount of vulnerability of this district at this time, because of lack of being able, for her to be able to attract some of the senior administrative people she must have to continue this upward trajectory, that you follow the recommendations of your chairperson, Mr. Minor, and that you very strongly support an advance of her contract for the next two to three and a half years. Thank you very much.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Next item on our workshop this afternoon is high school renaming nominations. Mr. Mike Barber, will you please bring us up to date the number, well, the nominations that have been received? We're only doing the names without revealing the number of replications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board members, Superintendent Saunders. By the way, we were sitting in the very back, and we were having trouble hearing you, Mr. Chair, when you were speaking. I don't know if you can have the microphone.
Thank you.
And Ms. Messenger was speaking a little bit louder and was very...
It's my kindergarten voice.
It was easy to hear you.
Thank you, first.
I do want to bring you up to speed as to where we are, by the way. This is Linda Lambert. She's our communications and public records associate, so she's been an instrumental part of this renaming process. So just a brief recap, the policy that we're following is policy seventy-three twenty. The language that deals with what we're here talking about today is at the bottom where it talks about if the board should initiate or be called upon to consider a name change than of an existing facility, then in the event, the board shall allow a period of not less than six months. Seems strange to think that when we started this process, six months seemed like a long time from where we were, but it's here. So what we did was, the process, we placed a legal advertisement on October ninth to initiate the start of the renaming process. On October tenth, we sent out a press release to all our media outlets in the Tampa Bay area. We posted the renaming process on the homepage of our school district website. We also have emphasized it on a regular basis on our social media sites, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. We held a public meeting on October twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, to take nominations and to discuss the process. These are the ways that people could submit nominations. They could email them to us, they could mail them, they could deliver them here to the school support center, or they also could present them during the town hall meeting we had out at Buffalo Creek Middle. Also, we have received nominations that have been forwarded to y'all, and they've been directed towards us. And we've had a number of nominations come through that source as well. Basically, we're taking them anyway people want to give them to us. Here's the list of name nominations that we have received. Now, okay, now...
I can't see the first two.
Let me explain something here. Is, we've received thirty-two different name nominations. Now, when we originally had this list, we discussed whether or not we should remove some of the ones that we know aren't serious. And I'm not speaking for Charlie, but I'll speak for myself. Okay. We, I don't think Charlie or me or anyone else asked to have the high school named after them, but people did submit these. And we made a promise to the Parish community when we were out there at the town hall meeting that we would present all the names that were nominated. So what you're looking at here is a list of every single name that we've received during this process. So again, this is just a list of the names we have received. It does not include at this point any numbers pertaining to a particular name. These are the names that we've received. We do have sheets available here with these names on them. We'll place those in the back of the room for those who want them. And then also, you know, it's been a part of the process that we will continue to accept nominations even up to and during the public hearing on February twenty-sixth. Any questions for us, or?
Willie McSchoolface.
I wish I knew who that was. Unfortunately, some of the people that submitted these names did not leave their identifying information, but again, this is something that y'all will have to sort out. All right, we'll be in the back if y'all have any questions. Oh, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy?
Mike, thank you. Linda, thank you. I really, this is not a deciding factor for me, but I'm just curious if we have it, a tally of, because I'm sure we'll get this question at some point. Again, it doesn't really affect my decision that much. I know what my three already are.
Right.
But just for record-keeping sake and for the community's sake, do we have a tally of...
Yes, absolutely. Now, we were told for this particular workshop that we would not provide the numbers at this point.
No, that's fine, yeah.
But we do have a tally.
That's all I need, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
We'll, I suppose we'll present that at the public hearing, but, yes.
I'm trying to get the attention of the chair here to speak. Well, I think it's understood that we're not going to say how many votes any of these names received. Can you tell us how many people did submit nominations?
Separately, there were three hundred and ninety that submitted the thirty-two names. That did not include the petition that came from the Parish community only.
How many were on that petition?
Sixteen hundred and thirty.
Fifteen hundred?
Sixteen hundred and thirty.
Sixteen hundred and thirty on a petition?
Mm-hmm, plus three ninety.
Three ninety, so it sounds like in all, there's about two thousand suggestions that have been provided to the district concerning the naming or renaming of the high school. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Board Member Golden.
Yes. Did the petitions that were sent in have all of these names as possibilities?
I can't say.
No.
No, we can't.
So, well, unfortunately, you can't tell me now because you said that there's...
Right.
Did the petitions have any option more than one?
We can't name what was on the petition.
Right. The petition was, by and large, backing one particular name.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Barber. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is review of the superintendent's contract. And I think we're going to try to put up here the contract that was presented back in December that the community and this board has been considering now for the last couple of months. And I think one of the reasons for this postponement was a feeling by the board that there needed more time, both for board members and for the community, to absorb what was in the contract. We had some continuations due to other needs of board members, but in any event, we've come to this day after a significant period of consideration by our community and the board as to the provisions. And there, yeah, because of the continuation, the particular dates that were included in the proposal back in December are out of date. And so there needs to be changes, you know, from December, you know, to February, I suggest. The, so what Michelle has put up on the board is some suggested changes for our consideration in the contract that we consider at tonight's board meeting. And the first is changing it from December twelfth to, or excuse me, sorry for me to read that because of the... And from the eleventh day of December to the twelfth day of February twenty nineteen. And I'm going to ask for Michelle's help as we go along with here, but the, if we have some other changes on page one, I think that's it. On page, on page two, you know, for our consideration is basically the same, you know, change since the, it would be effective on, instead of, it would be effective February twelve, twenty nineteen, if the board feels that that's appropriate to have for consideration and voting on this evening. That's up there in paragraph B at the top of the page. The other change is a similar change down toward the bottom. Again, well, it's really on the footer, describing a particular document that we are, you know, considering right now or to discussing if there's a consensus that this is consistent with the will of the board for consideration tonight. And it would be on the footer, the, you know, date would reflect today's date, twenty nineteen oh-two, twelve. In other words, and this would be version D that you see at the bottom, it's sort of an identification. I wouldn't call that substantive, but it is a change. And I'm mentioning that for, you know, consideration, if there's a consensus that that, those are appropriate. Now, that appears, that change appears at the bottom of each page. I'm going to skip to, you know, head to pages where there's, to page eight. The, there was a paragraph eight point six, and I may be wrong, but it's, one of the members suggested that the language in eight point six should be adjusted to make it a requirement of the superintendent in the contract that she participate in the Chief Executive Officer Leadership Development Program. I may be wrong, but I think that Mr. Golden had that in mind. And, and so we have language in this proposal for consensus if there's a feeling of the board to go ahead for, yeah, Mr. Kennedy?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I believe we missed one. Kelly, yeah, Kelly scrolled by.
Ken, interview.
Okay.
We missed a couple. Kelly scrolled by a couple of red lines.
Okay.
That I wanted to make sure we had.
Okay, good. All right. Let's finish up with eight point six. I think we are. But the language, and this is for the benefit of the public and anybody who might be viewing it, but the, you know, suggested language for consideration at eight point six would be beginning within ninety days of the effective date of this contract, the superintendent shall begin participation in the Chief Executive Officer Leadership Development Program. And, you know, that would be added to that paragraph. Okay? It's saying, you're not going to wait around. We want the superintendent to have the benefit of this program within ninety days. And this isn't a "may," this is a direction by contract toward her, toward her, what she does. Now, I think that was, that was consistent with what I understood, Mr. Golden.
Yes, sir.
Felt would improve. Okay, why don't we skip back, and I apologize for maybe skipping over something. What page are we going back to, Kelly?
Page three.
Page six.
Action four.
Boy, I was moving a little fast. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for bringing that to the chair's attention. Okay. The, on page three, paragraph four, the, this is changing the term of the agreement. And I think this was suggested by Vice Chair Messenger. Maybe I'm wrong, okay? But the agreement shall remain in full force and effect from, we have, you know, today, February twelve, nineteen ninety, to and including June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Now, this isn't, this is significant in a sense that what we had in December talked in terms of term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two. And the proposal that is on the screen, or we have, you know, suggested for consideration tonight, if there's a consensus that this would work, you know, for everybody here, let me know. Now, we'd have a different prototype for consideration tonight, if that's, if that's the wish of anybody. But I, it's, this is my feel, my understanding, what adjustments were wished by at least one board member. And I want anybody to please speak up and say, "No, I don't like that," or whatever. This is the time to do it because, you know, today's the day. We're in or out. And, but it's an attempt, you know, by the chair to reflect the suggestions and conversations that, you know, previously had of, not objections to this that was presented on the twelfth, but suggestions that how it may be improved to reflect, you know, for our community. So this, the term of this agreement has changed from, to have an end date in June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Now, the arguments against that are the longer the term, the more perceived stability, you know, for the district. That's the argument against that. We may recall that the initial term of the contract with Dr. Green was four years. This proposal that is on the screen, you know, for our, you know, consideration right now... This proposal that is on the screen, you know, for our, you know, consideration right now would not be, you know, four years. It would not be three and a half. We're really talking about two years and three or four months, something like that, which is a significant change. And I, I thank Mr. Kennedy for bringing that to the chair's attention because that is an important change that the community and all of us should be aware of. And I hope that's, that we have a consensus that that's a step in the right direction. That's the right thing to do. And I'm looking around to see if there's any. Yes, sir. Vice Chair Messenger.
Um, I do recall saying that I think it should be shorter.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if I specifically said a time limit. I would be in favor of shorter.
Okay. The, the problem, you know, when you say shorter, this is shorter than what we had in December.
I agree with that.
Okay. You agree with this?
I know. I agree with that statement.
Okay, well, thank you. And, you know, and, and we've heard on the community, shorter. I can, anything shorter would not work. I will just flat out say that. This, anything shorter would not be agreeable to the superintendent. Anything shorter would not convey stability. And what we have would be really going backwards, in my opinion. But this, this adjustment, you might say, reflected my sense that of, I wouldn't call it a compromise, but I think that we want to be together, you know, in a consensus of what comes before the meeting tonight. And while, you know, I personally am more on the side of, you know, stability, this is an attempt to, you know, bring us all together. I hope we're all together. I get a smile. Okay. Yes, your, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. I don't want to, if, if your preference as chair is to go through each of the red line changes, I'm certainly all for that. I do have an alternate path forward I would like to suggest to the board for consideration. So it would, that alternate proposal or possibility, or maybe we can work with this as well, would mean postponing this, the consideration of this contract. And, but if you as chair want to go through the red line changes first, I respect that.
Why don't we go through that? And if you want to bring it up, okay. But let's see what we got here for the community to consider, as well as for board members to consider. Thank you. That's okay. Now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Board Member Hope.
You know, I, I, I think it's important that we follow the process that the chair is laying out. We, we do need to work through this agreement. I mean, we, we need an agreement. And with regards to the issue that we're discussing now on the timing and the timeline of this, it's important that we as board members take off our campaign hats or whatever we had on and look at the organization and the organization's needs today and the organization's needs over the course of the next 24 months. We have to complete this school year. We need to ensure that we continue the elevation of the, the D schools that now look like they're going to become C schools. We need to open the three new schools. The high school, I'll remind you, will not be fully implemented until at least two years out. This year, they're going to take on ninth and 10th grade. Next year, they're going to take on the 11th grade. And the following year, they'll be at the completed 12th grade, having four grades in the school. And so from a timing perspective, the need to recruit a deputy superintendent over instruction, a, a chief information officer, or a, a deputy superintendent over those areas, a director of business systems, and the list goes on, will take time to recruit those people and move the organization through this transition. We are in a transitional time. This, this should be treated as a, a continued turnaround. And we need predictability for at least two years. Otherwise, we're not going to, the superintendent will not be able to qua, to recruit qualified leaders in education because they're not going to want to come work for a district, for a superintendent, who may be here for a short period of time, which puts their jobs at risk. And, and in that, you know, if, should, should the issue of, of kicking this can down the road further come up again, it's important that we look at what the organizational needs are. We have an administrative staff that is close to being burned out because we have not been able to recruit an executive team because we continue to fail to exercise an agreement that will continue the progress and keep what we know we have in place for the at least foreseeable transition time. So, Mr. Chair, I fully support moving this to a shorter period of time, which is less than two and a half years. It gets us through the first two years of opening these schools. And if I recall, there's a provision in the contract, in this case, would be at the end of next year, where this board will meet and we will decide what steps we want to take moving forward, whether we want to continue the path or whether we want to go out for a search. One of the things that I'm going to add in this, should we go to a performance schedule, is that within this first year, the superintendent will have completed and presented to the board a strategic plan for the district to move it forward, to include the criteria that we need in a superintendent to implement that strategic plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Board Member Hope. Board Member Kennedy?
Uh, thank you. I would, I would just ask my board colleagues to at least let me present the idea before you judge it. So, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kennedy. Okay, I, any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll continue with the.
I do have one coming.
Yes, sir, Board Member Golden.
In December, we postponed basically this contract. And I'm pretty sure that, right now, everybody here's kind of got their minds made up as to what they will support and what they won't support. I would just appreciate going through the contract, having all of the terms that the chair and the attorney have worked on since December in one place at one time. And then if we still aren't able to come to an agreement that's in the best interest of the people in this district, then we'll hear from everybody again, as long as it takes. That, that's what the meeting is for, and that's when we will vote. But to go through this workshop and have a quasi-board meeting before we go to the board meeting to try to figure out where everybody stands is not fair. So, Mr. Chair, if we could just get through the changes that you and the attorney and the superintendent have worked out, then we can go to the real meet. And that is whether we're going to support what you all have done or not. It's yes or no. For whatever reason, it doesn't matter whether, whether we think it's a shorter time or whether we think that we can negotiate with the superintendent some more. Let's do that. But let's, let's, let's stop dickering around here.
Okay, thank, okay, thank you, Mr. Golden. Okay, the, we are on page three. Did I, was there, on page four, it was just the footer that was a change. And page five was just a footer change. And page six was just a footer change. Page seven was a footer change. Page eight, we, we talked about the Chief Executive Officer Leaders, Leadership Development Program. And the thrust of that thing, it's supposed to be initiated within 90 days of the date of this contract. And it's a, instead of being permissive, as the language was in the original version, December version, this is mandatory. Now, did I skip over anything else? And, okay. Page nine, again, is just a footer change. Page 10 is a footer change. 11 is a footer change. 12 is a footer change. 13 is a footer change. The.
Extend of the agreement, item number 13, Mr. Minor, on page 13.
Okay, okay, thank, thank you. On page 13. This paragraph is about extension. And frankly, I was very proud of the workmanship on this. I think this is a, a great paragraph to have in any kind of contract like this that we considered. And there was no problem expressed by the board in our December meeting about this paragraph. But the idea behind this is both the superintendent, the board, the community would know at least, you know, six months before the end of the contract, whether or not there was going to be some, you know, extension of, or termination of the contract. And it gives everybody a little bit legroom to make plans. You know, if, if superintendent would say, you know, I'm not wishing to continue, then we would have the six months to go about a, a search. And if we, the board would say, we don't want you to continue after, it provides, you know, six months for the superintendent to make planning. I think, you know, in, in any contract like this, the effort should be directed toward being fair, you know, for everybody involved, something everybody can be proud of. And not just, you know, compensation. And we talked a little bit about this. This is fair. It's, it's not, I'm not going to say not generous, but it's, you know, consistent with, and we've all had the information about superintendent's salaries around the state. But it, it's, it's fair in light of that. It's fair in light of, you know, the history we've had in terms of compensation and benefits. And that was the effort made. And I'll take, you know, part of the blame, you know, for that. But Mr. Vogel, Dr. Vogel was part of that, and Mr. Dai. We went through contracts, and particularly Dr. Green's, in trying to emulate and come up with something that was fair. And I think we generally succeeded in that. But in any event, paragraph 13 about the extension of the agreement, you know, changes the date, you know, of termination. It says, "Honor before December 31, 2020." That's a year from this December. "The parties agree to mutually determine if this agreement will be extended beyond June 30, 2021," which is the new, for this, you know, contract date of termination. And those are, those are the changes to reflect a shorter contract. Okay? And, okay. Help me out, Michelle and Kennedy, or Michelle and Kelly. I think that's it in terms, they're, they're not a huge amount of changes, but I think this is an appropriate time to review what changes. I did not want staff or me to be perceived as, you know, just putting something on without there having been a review by the board and the community an opportunity to know what we're talking about here. And it, it's not significant, but it has, you know, changing it, you know, one year less is probably the most significant, you know, change in the, in this proposal. Now, the, was there, did I cover everything that we had in here? Okay, thank you very much. Now, the, in these, you know, proposed changes, is there anyone who has, you know, concerns about this? About the changes that were made from the December? There wasn't talk about changes in December, some, but we are, we, by necessity, we're changing dates. But, you know, a couple of months have passed, you know, since December. And this is on the agenda for tonight, and I think it's fisher can bait time. And I know if we don't have some agreement, it's wishing our superintendent goodbye. We either have an agreement that's agreeable to her and us, and I believe this, and I hope this agreement would be agreeable to her. Anything shorter is not agreeable. If there's any continuation, she's not agreeable, she's gone. That's the bottom line. And so, and I, I've been told that indirectly and directly. It's no fishing around, no delay, no anything else. If this board doesn't come to a consensus this afternoon as to an acceptable contract to provide to her, and this board tonight does not agree to, you know, a contract, we're going to be saying goodbye to Cynthia Saunders as being our superintendent. So I'm asking now, you know, if, I'll repeat, of the changes that I proposed in this contract, is there anyone who, is, is there a consensus or not a consensus? This is the time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kennedy?
Speaking to the changes only, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hope, these changes are okay?
I, I'm fine, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Messenger.
As Mr. Kennedy said, speaking to the changes only, they're fine.
Okay. Mr. Golden, are these changes, are you, are you comfortable with us?
I only had one change that I was concerned about with respect to the contract, and it has been addressed.
Okay, thank you. The, the others are really, you know, kind of changing dates. They're, the, one I think that Dr. Golden was talking about is the other kind of substantive saying, instead of "may," you know, "shall," you know, we have training.
That's correct.
I had that correct.
That is good.
And, and the other, what I, what I would consider substantive is the shortening it by a year. But it sounds like, as far as the changes go, there's, you know, consensus that that is a proposal that should come before the board for decision. Vice Chair Messenger.
I'm fine with the changes you propose, but I have another change I'd like to propose.
You have the floor.
Um, I do believe we should add some sort of evaluation piece or some other performance pay piece. I looked back at Dr. Green's contract, and the language there was fine. The problem I always had with Dr. Green's evaluation was not necessarily the language contract, language, but more the actual evaluation tool that was used. So if we were to have that type of language, which I'm fine with, I, I just think there should be some sort of language in there about that, that I would like that we review the evaluation tool on a yearly basis with the agreement with the superintendent. And I saw lots of contracts that had something similar written in them. Or I also went back to the language that was in the previous contract. I'm okay with that as well. The only thing about the one that was in Dr. Green's is it, it did tie money. And if it was a negative rating, then, then there was actually a decrease in money. And so I think that's something to consider with that if we choose to do that. But I believe that something should be in there because every single one of our teachers have to go through that every single year. And I think that our superintendent should have to do that as well.
Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm in a total agreement. And what I would suggest is we, we take the annuity amount because the superintendent's already in the state retirement system. And, and an annuity is, is almost meaningless when you've got two years for retirement. And take the amount of money that we would spend on an annuity and put that in a performance fund of dollars. If, do we have the, do we have the language that was in the agreement that had been originally negotiated with Superintendent Saunders that we could include?
I have. Board and Saunders agreed to establish a schedule of goals and measurable benchmarks for her tenure as superintendent. The schedule shall be established no later than August 1st of 2018. That's what I have.
Okay, so what that provides for.
And I have the line of that it was from the contract. I couldn't find the actual contract, but those are my notes.
I, I think we may have it. But, Mr. Chair, that language will allow us each year. Now, we just need to set the original, the, the initial date of establishing those performance goals. And we could do that. We could set that, maybe, you know, it's, most of the year's already up. We could set that maybe, you know, it's, most of the year's already up, so we could, you know, set it for, for April or March or, but I think that allows us to move the contract forward, have performance goal, have a performance provision in place that is funded, and then we could take up maybe next month, or the chair, the chair could work with the superintendent to propose a set of, of goals to be reached for the balance of this year, and then, and in, in April, we could set the goals for the twenty nineteen, twenty fiscal year.
Mr. Chair? Board Member Golden?
Yes, sir. The, all of these suggestions are fine, but what we're going to be called upon at five forty-five to do is to enter into a contract. And the one thing that I do not want to hear in June or September is that that's not in the contract and that's not what we understood. So I would appreciate if we could get more clarity specifically about what is being asked of this superintendent at this stage to determine whether or not that is something that she is going to abide by. I don't, I don't want us to have any misconception.
This was negotiated with her before, so my suggestion-
That's, that's helpful to know.
My suggestion is that we could put that language, do we have the language that we could cut and paste and put it into the screen?
Okay, thank you.
It's on page two, line sixty, is what I would say.
I, I think that Board Member, you know, Golden has a good point. You know, this is, this is the moment. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but where Vice Chair Messenger is coming from, and forgive me for not having that in there, because you did bring this up, to have some kind of performance provision in the contract. And a moment ago, if I understood you correctly, you said that the performance paragraph contained in Dr. Green's contract is not in this proposal, and that's something you would like to have in the proposal that we have for-
I have an email to them.
I, I don't have the whole contract, I only have my notes.
I'm sorry, can you sit down?
Yes, sir.
Can I respond to that?
Well, okay, yeah, my, my, my question to you was the, the language that was contained in Dr. Green's, you know, contract about performance, you know, compensation, and she did receive, you know, some compensation as a result of that. That is something that you'd prefer, you know, to be in the proposal that we give to Superintendent Saunders?
I am saying that any metric that we can use to measure would be important in, in this contract. I am not, I am not a lawyer that is real picky on the specific word choice, that's just not my forte. What I'm saying is I'm fine with either what's in Dr. Green's, or I am also fine with what was agreed to in the prior contract. Like I said, I could not find my copy of the prior contract, all I could find was my notes, and my notes say that was page two, line sixty of the prior contract. I have that in quotes. I'm fine with that as well, I just, I believe that is the important part, is to have something in there. If we wanted to do Dr. Green's, I don't really feel like it's actually very different than what has already been agreed to. The only difference is percentages, but that would be easily changed or altered to use the money. I think that was something that I had suggested the last time we discussed this, was to use the annuity money as performance pay money. And so to me, I mean, I think that, that would be alterable because all it says there is the superintendent evaluation will be based on an evaluation of the superintendent and the achievement of the district goals. And, you know, we could change it to board goals. It would not be-
Okay.
I have the actual-
I'm sorry, Mr. Hope. The, we have in, in there an annuity. Do you have any problem to having that annuity, you know, plus, and in Dr. Green's contract, there was annuity plus this performance benefit? And if we were to add in this performance, you know, incentive, like in Dr. Green's, our proposal would be more like Dr. Green's then than it is right now. And if I understand, excuse me.
The copy that's up there is a redline copy, which I do not have attached to the boardwork. So I was trying to get Kelly's attention so I can ask her to put a page up while yours is-
Okay, can you hold that?
Sorry, I was distracted.
The, if I understand, I, I was saying if we were to insert the language from Dr. Green's contract about, you know, performance, you know, put that paragraph, and I'm thinking in terms of drafting ease because the clock is ticking to have something available, as Dr. Golden, you know, said. If we were to insert that in addition to the annuity, would that work for you, Vice Chair Messenger?
Oh, you're asking me, I thought you were asking Mrs. Saunders. I feel like she was ready to answer that.
Mr. Minor, I have no problem with you taking Dr. Green's performance and taking the annuity money out as it was stated and tying it to the performance metrics that Ms. Messenger was requesting. So just swap it from that initial thing to tie it to either the metrics that was in the contract I agreed to, or Dr. Green's, which I think was very similar.
Very similar.
So, that's not an issue.
Okay, now, I, I have a, that's Superintendent Saunders is part of this deal too, so I'm glad you spoke up. That was the next thing, if, what Vice Chair Messenger said that she needed to feel comfortable with it, is comfortable with you. Now, the, as far as drafting it, I'm going to ask staff, is that possible to swipe those paragraphs? We got Dr. Green's, you know, contract, and we could swipe that for the annuity, and that would, that would be, it may be, everybody seems to be agreeable to that, I guess.
Well, Mr. Minor?
Okay.
Please. The language that staff now has is the language that Vice Chair Messenger read, and it is the language that was agreed to prior by the superintendent and her attorney and Mr. Dye. So as a suggestion for the production for ease, staff can put the language that Ms. Messenger read, that's already been approved by the superintendent and her prior attorney. We can look at it on the screen and see if that works for the five of us. That may assist in moving it forward for consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Hope. Okay, now, let, let me pose the question to Superintendent Saunders. Do you have a problem with, you know, switching the annuity, you know, for this, this language that Mr. Board Member Hope was talking about?
I do not have a problem with that.
Vice Chair Messenger, is that okay with you?
That was my idea last time we talked about this.
Okay, I just, and staff, that's something we can do-
We're working on it right now.
Pretty quickly, okay. So, okay, Board, Board Member Golden?
Since I precipitated this, I'd like to hear counsel say that the inclusion of this provision is because it was omitted as a consequence of previous discussions, and it is not a new provision that would require us to comply with any notice or any continuance.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dye?
Yes, Reverend Golden, you are free to work on this document throughout the whole process. You don't, do not have to go back and renotice, re-advertise, or anything like this. It's, it's, it's a piece of clay that you can bang on and sculpt until you're happy with it, till both sides are happy with it, let me put it that way.
It's really good to be amongst all of y'all who are so good with images and what have you, and I'm not being picky. We just have to live with this. This is a, this is a contract.
Okay.
And I know a little bit about contracts myself, because I is an attorney.
I know you guys are, I'm just trying to buy it.
And I just would hope that we don't wind up giving fodder to further erode the trust that we are trying so hard here to rebuild.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond real quick?
Yeah, Mr. Dye?
Reverend Golden, please understand that I give you legal advice, I don't give you wisdom advice, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it's an agreement that you, you have to believe that is of the best interest, interest of the school board or the school district. But, but adding it in at this stage in the process is legal.
Okay.
That was a question I had.
Okay. I, I think that there's a consensus that the exchanging the annuity, you know, paragraph with the incentive bonus language that was in the interim contract is agreeable to everybody, okay? So, all right, okay, I'm going to pause for a second, I think Board Member Messenger is making sure we got the correct language. Yeah, we have to change the date. Maybe change that to May one, twenty nineteen, or June?
April one, April one, or April one. But believe it or not, I have, I have seen agreements like at the University of South Florida where the performance goals weren't set until the year, and already going six months into it.
I just, all right, how do people feel about June one, twenty nineteen? Okay, I got one thumbs up. Okay, anybody uncomfortable with June one, twenty nineteen?
Just so that I clearly understand, you're saying to set, make the schedule or about, the valuation tool, or however you want to call it, for June one, we have it set by that date so that the superintendent would have the entire year knowing what the expectations are for that year, and at the end of that year, we would do the evaluation and create a new evaluation tool if necessary for every year. Is that what you're saying?
That, that's how I understand it.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay. So wait, Michelle, can you change the date to the June one, twenty nineteen? And otherwise, I, other, otherwise I think we're all set with that. And goodbye, annuity, hello, performance review and incentive salary, okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Dye?
Yes, a drafting comment. I think I heard Mrs. Messenger say that once it's in place, there would be a whole year operating under the review instrument before the evaluation would take place. Is that, is that correct? Is that accurate?
Or I guess, I would assume a close to a year, whenever the school year ends, I think we always did Dr. Green's in April or May, but essentially one year.
Yeah, this language says the end of the fiscal year, which if you set it on June one, then when your fiscal year is, what, July thirty-one? June thirtieth. I mean, you, you're talking about doing the first evaluation, then in twenty twenty, it sounds like.
Right.
Is that correct?
That is my understanding. Is that everyone else's understanding?
Yeah, then I, then I would, I would amend the language to say that twenty twenty is when the first evaluation takes place. Just so it's clear, just so it's clear.
But the schedule would be established in twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen.
I don't think there's a specific date on when the actual evaluation would be.
It says a performance review shall be conducted prior to the end of the board's fiscal year. That's the language, I don't want to trip over it.
So you say change it-
The first performance, the first performance review will be conducted prior to the end of the twenty twenty fiscal year.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe we ought to put in that date, the twenty twenty fiscal-
I'm glad I'm here.
Twenty nineteen, twenty fiscal year. End of the board's twenty, or nineteen, twenty fiscal-
The first performance, yeah, right there. Fiscal year ending twenty twenty. Fiscal year ending twenty twenty.
Prior to the end, yeah, I think that's good language.
But I'm not an attorney.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy has-
Thank God.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Minor. I believe, I think, and I'll probably be proven wrong here in a second, but Kelly, could you scroll up a little bit? I think we are adding this-
No, they're, they're adding it, then they're going to cut and paste it.
Oh, this is where we're cutting from, thank you. That makes sense.
Yeah, you're going to insert that at the tax annuity.
Okay, no, I was going to make the comment that I believe we're editing the wrong document, but it's going to be cut from there and pasted into the new.
Yeah, right.
Well, you think you're doing that.
I'm not going to get into that.
There you go.
Okay, why don't we let her, let them get through with it?
Sure.
I don't want to be talking while they- So it's going to be seven point two, I guess.
Performance review and incentive salary should be called.
Okay. Is the numbering below that? Yeah, that's- Okay, we're going to take out the annuity.
It's, it's tripping. When, when they accept the edits at the end, it will take that out.
Okay. All right, I think. Okay, I think we, I understand Superintendent, that's agreeable to you?
Yes.
All right, then I get up there and say, yeah, you're kidding me? All right, I think we, we've changed some some of this proposal, a lot of it was kind of updating the time. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Board Member Hope, you had something you'd like to share with us?
No, I think that, I think that completes it.
Okay. Where are we at? Are there any other further questions or suggestions?
I think that Mr. Kennedy had asked early on in workshop, the opportunity to make proposal, a recommendation that we not consider this at all, that we table that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy?
I would defer to you if you'd like to continue just making sure everybody's squared away with this.
Well, I just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable.
Through the whole document.
What?
I mean, I would like the chance to speak when you finish, but thank you.
Well, I'll never be finished, but go ahead. Do you have something you'd like to offer?
I do, yeah, well, if you want me to go now, I will. I think first of all, there's, I don't think this is fisher but cut bait time. This is not a, this is not a binary choice we have today. There's, there, there are always ways to get creative and, and be thoughtful. Obviously, we have a, a divided community, significantly divided community here. And I think we as board members are in a crucial moment in our governance of the district and the decision-making that we put on display. And, and what I'm working for here is a solution to bring the most people on board. It's good for the, I think it's good for this board, I think it's, I, I hope it will be good for the superintendent, and most importantly, it will be good for the student success of this district. So I'll just lay it out there, and you can, you all can let me know what you think. What I would propose and what I will make a motion to do tonight is to postpone this to the first meeting in April. In the meantime, what I suggest we do is at a minimum, there have been calls for us, a chorus of very loud phone calls and emails and face-to-face conversations to, holding our feet to the fire because we said we would do a search. We put on our campaign hats last year, and we said we were going to do a search. Obviously, things on the ground have changed, and Mr. Minor, you addressed that pretty well a couple of meetings ago about things change and you reconsider. But at minimum, maybe if nobody has the appetite for a full-blown national search, we at minimum at least post the job for thirty days. I think as board members, that would be minimal governance of the most important job that we do as board members. I think it would, I think it would not undermine Superintendent Saunders, I think it would help her. This, your reference to, you know, it's either, it's either this or she's leaving, I think Cindy is too smart to, to give us that ultimatum, but, but she should put that ultimatum to us because this is a negotiation. And what I am putting forward is another step in that negotiation. So again, I believe we should postpone this tonight, post the job, it will, it will do one of, by posting the job and see who's out there and interested. Just have HR post it, we don't need to advertise, we don't need to do anything, but at minimum post it. It will, it will debunk the narrative that nobody out there wants this job, because this is a top school district in Florida, we are supported by our voters, we have rock-solid finances, we have, thanks to the superintendent and our team, we have rising school grades, and by not at least looking, she is going to lead under a cloud of, well, she never had to apply, she never even had to put her name in. So this is not to, this is not to knock her down or to her detriment by doing this, I hope we make her leadership stronger. But I think we owe it to this community to minimum post this job for thirty days, see what we get, talk to, talk to top candidates, Cindy automatically will be a top candidate because of all of the great things that have been said here today. But to rush into this, not, not that we're rushing, because this has been, we, we've been going around and around about this, it does not, I think, reflect well on our leadership, it doesn't reflect well on our governance as board meters, and board members, excuse me, and to Cindy's detriment, I think it will not reflect well on her, and she will constantly be dogged by accusations and second guessing and, and so forth. So that's what I suggest, we postpone this until the first meeting in April, we post the job, we see what candidates we get, we, just like we would do for any other job in the county, if a principal, if a principal opening opens up, even if that person has been with the district for twenty-five years, they have to put their name in, they have to apply, they have to go through the process, and our superintendent should, should be no different. So, that's all for now, I'm sure this will lead somewhere. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chair. Board Member Hope.
So that we use workshop time for how we've set this up, and this is a fantastic idea to do it around the table, since Mr. Kennedy has brought this up, I think it's important that we, we, we discuss some of what he is suggesting. First and foremost, if any of you have gone through political appointments, high pri- high-profile public jobs, whenever there is a change in administration in Tallahassee, and there are new secretaries to be appointed, what happens until a definitive decision is made is it creates an opportunity and fuel for those who want to position their preferred candidate or their process into place, and the best thing that you can do in situations like that is once you've made your decision, make it definitive, close the door, and then people line up behind the new leader. So pushing this down the road will not strengthen our superintendent, it will weaken our superintendent, will continue to get the emails from, by the way, a minority of people that want something else done. With regards to the campaigning, I have been consistent since I've been on this board that we are not ready to do a search until we have a strategic plan, and we have defined what type of characteristics and qualifications we need in a superintendent. We, we, the five of us, bear the sole responsibility of ensuring the stability, viability, and progress of this organization. This is why we are in the difficult positions that we chose to get elected to, to make these difficult situations, and these decisions don't always please everyone, frequently, they're not going to please everyone, and these are hard decisions that unfortunately, we, we chose to take that office. The five of us around this table and on that dais have to make the difficult decisions that are in the best interest of our organization, keeping in mind our core, which is the education of nearly fifty thousand students, and the support of our educators in the classroom. We alone must make this decision, and there comes a time when we have to turn off the amplifiers from the public, we have to disregard the emails and think solely about our responsibility, the needs of our organization, and what at this time we can do to put the organization in the best position to move forward, and it's, it's not a fun place to be. And once we make the decisions, there are gonna be critics regardless of the decision we make, but there will also be supporters out there, and my ask for the community is once this board makes the decision, rally around the leadership we have put in place, wish the leadership well and strength and protection from God so that the superintendent can go out and recruit the necessary personnel that we need to continue to operate this district. And I, I, I will say the same thing tonight, we, as Reverend Golden said, we need to make this decision, we need to make this decision, we may need to make this decision tonight. The chairman apparently has had conversations with the superintendent, I've had conversations with the superintendent, she's working fourteen hours a day, seven days a week, I can't tell you the number of times I've driven by that parking lot at eight or nine o'clock at night, and her car's in the parking lot, and I go in and I go upstairs because I want to know what I can do to help her with a difficult job that she and her staff have to do that has been understaffed since we have refused to give her an agreement of some longevity so that she can go out and recruit quality people. And no, there are a lot of people that would like this job, the issue is, are we in a position, are we in a position as a board, as a community, in an organization, to go out and actually recruit, recruit someone who is in a better position at this moment, at this moment, to continue to lead the organization through the challenges we still have before us? And I don't think that's so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Any other comments? Mr. Kennedy, I, I know your proposal is meant well, but I see it much differently. I see the proposal not only undercuts our superintendent now, it undercuts this district, it puts us back, it's harmful. There's nobody on the face of this earth who is better qualified for moving us forward now. Now, I think I've received, as probably all of you have received, many letters, correspondence, phone calls, people stopping me in Publix, everywhere else, and saying low-meaning and well-intentioned things. But they have no idea of the magnitude of responsibility that goes into being a board member, being superintendent, the work that's involved, the knowledge required, and there's nobody on this face of the earth who is better qualified to do that, to have that and continue that. To suggest to her, by any such emotion, to suggest to anyone here, and she would not be part of that search, she would not, she's gone, and you say, I put it in a binary, it is a binary, she's gone. You want to go down this questioning trail, just quickly, I'm right in the first step. And I am just, now she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I've known that for some time, I reaffirmed it this afternoon, she's gone, say goodbye, shake her hands, thank her. Say goodbye. You want to make that motion, or this board wants to do that, to kick the can down the road? We have a very good contract for the best person, you know, to move this district along. We want to move it along, not delay it. Now, people, there are going to be some people out there who say, you know, Dave, you know, why do you do this? My simple answer is, from my perspective of being involved with this school district, and both as a citizen and as a critic and all of that, you know, for probably twenty years of coming in and even suing this school district, you know, I have never encountered anyone better qualified doing a better job than Cynthia Saunders. And I'm just, I'm not going to, if you make the motion, you do, but certainly, I don't think it's gonna have the unity of support, and I, I think that we can say right then, goodbye Cynthia Saunders, that's how I see it. I think it's a tragic mistake that you suggested, sir.
Can I reply?
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you. We respectfully disagree, Mr. Chair, and that's, that's okay, that's why there's five of us. My, my issue with, or I shouldn't say my issue, but why I see this as different is this is not the usual players when it comes to school board feedback. We have all been reached out to by people who don't, I don't want to say never, but I've heard from people in this process I've never heard from before, who just look at the situation and say, there are, there are process questions here. This is not, again, I'll, I'll repeat this again, I've tried to walk this balance, every conversation we've had here about this over the past few months, is there are many good things to say about the superintendent's leadership, but to go forward with a process where we don't even do the most basic due diligence for, by posting the job, can I, may I, Mr. Chair? I think that reflects poorly on us as board members, and, Mr. Chair, perhaps you're right, maybe she is the greatest superintendent on earth, but I think it's just good governance to at least post the position and prove that she is the best person out there, and then going forward, all of the criticisms flying around that are criticizing our process will be silenced because we went through the proper avenue when any district would hire a superintendent. This is not the same situation, in twenty fifteen, Dr. Green had been the deputy superintendent for two years, she had taken part in the search to be the superintendent in twenty thirteen. So, that I thought was a good process. Cindy has proven herself over the past six or seven months, but there are, there is enough, I think, valid criticisms, criticisms that I cannot answer, and I think they are solved by at least posting the job for thirty days. That's all, that's all that's behind this. I, one more thing, I have no preferred candidate, I have no dog in this fight, I am not, there is no ulterior motives here, I just believe our process could be better, and we could provide better governance of the district. Thank you.
Board Member Hope.
You know, I, I'm glad we're having the discussion, because Mr. Kennedy's comments about good governance, now I understand, I understand that he has been persuaded by people in the public that the appropriate process is to go out and do a search, and, and that's, that's not the way governance works. When you got, or, or run an ad or whatever, we.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy, you might recognize you're out of words.
And, and I do have expertise in this area, I mean, I've got the degrees to demonstrate it, whether it's a private corporation or a public entity, when you have a number-two person in an organization that has been, been intimately involved with the organization and has worked there as a high-level executive for five years, and if that person transitions in a time of need to take over the helm, and they perform to the satisfaction of the governing board for seven months, there is no reason or no compelling law or, or governance requirement to go out and run an ad to test the waters. And I, 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 I challenge you to go to the, the Harvard Business, you know, Journal or whatever you want to look at, but I assure you, we are not doing anything wrong from a governance perspective, we are doing our job, we are doing our job by securing the organization. So if, if someone has persuaded you that somehow we are not practicing good governance by instilling the number-two person who we made during an interim the leader of the organization, who has proven herself to rise to the demands of the organization without going out and doing a search to see who we can compare her to, I assure you, what we are doing today and what we are practicing is acceptable governance, whether we're a public entity or whether we're a private entity or whether we're traded on the New York Stock Exchange. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kennedy, you have some remarks?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me be clear again, I'm not suggesting we advertise, I'm not suggesting we enlist FSBA, I'm suggesting we place a job opening on our website that the position is open for resumes. I didn't really want to bring this into this, but it's, but it's there, and I guess we have to address it. Another thing that thirty days of posting the job will do is allow the superintendent to clear up this matter with the DOE, which I, again, I'll say for the tenth time, I am very confident she will be cleared, but with the cloud of that, with the cloud of this process, this to me, again, that's why there's five of us, we can all disagree, you don't need to start yelling at anybody, this cleans up every criticism that I have heard from the anti, the pro, and the vast majority in the middle, who have reached out to say, hey, maybe there's a better way to do this, considering all the factors that are at work right now. Mr. Chair, that's, I've, I've said my piece, that's all I got.
Okay. Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kennedy, you are absolutely right. You're just too late.
We can't hear you.
I said that he is absolutely right, but he is also too late. The discussions that you are having today are the discussions that should have been had in June, when this lady was offered an interim contract, and you all had the opportunity to do that search that you promised. Don't talk to me about us being a board, because that, that's, that's the first place you got to start. Mr. Dr. Hope, you're right, but the reality of what you're proposing here, we are not gonna know, at least for the next ninety days, because one of the provisions that we never changed in this contract is that we give each other ninety days' notice. This is not a two-year contract.
That's correct.
Two-and-a-half-year contract, this is a ninety-day-at-a-time contract. Now, I've, I've heard from some people too, most of whom have an opinion one way or the other about what should have been done or what should not be done, but you're both right, the people that are gonna make this decision today are sitting at this table, and I doubt very seriously if anything that's said by any other one of us is gonna change what we already feel in our hearts about what we're going to do today. When I came on this board, this board was prepared to make a decision in December. I asked then, let's wait till February, so it's really interesting now to see that I couldn't get it done in February, but now I'm being asked to extend it till April. When are we going to say, you know what, we're not perfect, I make mistakes every day? I made one two-and-a-half hours ago. We make mistakes, but you make a decision, and if it's a right one, you glory in the right decision, if it's a wrong one, you live with it, and you stop whining and stop being regretful unless you know right now you're sitting here because you're under some unction of somebody else's influence. A lot of people elected all of us, and they elected us to make decisions. Now, I'm telling you, four years from now, I'm gonna find out whether this was a good decision or not. good decision or not. I'm going to know that. And the person who sat here before me found out in the last election about the decisions that were made the four years before. And I refuse to continue to look back. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I was not asked to be here to look back on yesterday, and I am not going to predict the future. All I'm going to tell you is that I have studied, I have listened, I have heard. We need to make a decision. Now, you may not, it may not be unanimous, but we need to make a decision today. And, and, you know what, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting a little emotional, I just, I just got, I lost a nephew. Yeah. No, 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 don't go, oh, oh, and all of that, okay? I just need to be excused to go be somewhere by myself for a moment. And I'm, I'm just, enough of this is enough. You know, make a decision. I wouldn't say man up, but you might punch me, so. I'm not going to say that. You have to excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll come back in a moment.
There's the office on the fifth floor, if you want to go up there.
Can I just leave this here?
Yes, yes, we will take care of it.
Are we, is this it? We got some other stuff that we got to do?
Go, 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 leave the car.
I'll see you all at 5:45. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, you wish to share some more remarks?
Yeah, that's, I, I just wanted to, well, Rev. is not even here, I wanted to address two points he made, so I will, I will address, I will address them with him later during the meeting. There's no sense in doing it now, he's, he's not here, I wanted to go back to December and go back to last summer as well, but that can, that can wait till later. So, I'm done.
Okay. I'd just like to respond to the claimed suggestion that continuing to have Cynthia Saunders as our superintendent is an issue that has not undergone due diligence. I think Andrea Messina was the one who said, I'm sorry, you're not hearing me back there, I'm sorry. I think Andrea Messina, our executive director of the Florida School Board Association, said there is no better, more effective way, you know, to evaluate, you know, someone to be superintendent than having that person serve as an interim superintendent. She's been evaluated, she's been judged, you know, for over six months. And I, I can say, personal experience of dealing with her, I was really surprised. Not to put down my memory and all that stuff, but I've never had, you know, working with any superintendent who I felt was as candid, sharing, responsive as Cynthia Saunders. I have contact with a lot of superintendents, Monday, I was sitting with, you know, five or six of them up in Orlando, great people, top people. And I, I only say that, maybe I'm bragging that, I have contact with a lot of superintendents. And I, I respect them all. And I don't consider Cynthia Saunders to be second-rate to any of them. We had a, you know, an expert assisting with us, and he wrote a column about, you know, he's had contact, worked with super-superintendents, and he did not feel, from his working experience with Cynthia, that she was second-rate either. She's been forthcoming, she's made tough decisions that were sometimes unpopular, unpopular, and, you know, coming back and people saying, you know, he's terrible and all of that stuff. When they say that, they lose credibility with me. And to say that there hasn't been due diligence in this consideration by this board, and us as individuals, I think is just incorrect. I've heard that from people, friends I've worked with, okay? And they, you know, she, she's, and she hadn't been vetted, and she went through interviews, you know, for her prior positions here as well as up in Marion County. I mean, that, that's a fact. But misstatements, untruths, you know, have been thrown at her, and they have been throwing at us, you know, to denigrate the idea of continuing her to be superintendent. Now, that happens, I lived through it, but I don't want to let her get away. This district needs her, the children need her, and that's what it's the bottom line. We have, and I'm sure you are as sensitive as I, we have a lot of key things that have to be done, that require the knowledge and background for implementing them, that there's nobody in the world better, you know, to make the best decisions than Cynthia Saunders between our schools, everything else. And it would be a real blow in the solar plexus, this district, for her to go away, because you want to have a 30-day search, and it's insulting to her. So thank you very much for listening.
Mr. Chair, one, one final thing. Do you have a minute?
Sure.
Cindy, is, do you, do you find this insulting? And is this a binary choice?
Charlie, I, I will agree with Reverend Golden. There's nothing that's going to happen between now and April that's going to change your opinion of the job or the performance I'm doing. So, for the organization, for my leadership team, a decision does need to be made. We cannot fill extra jobs. In addition, Doug's going to lose another senior member in a couple of months because they're retiring the end of the drop. We are short-staffed. There's a lot of work that has to be done. Unfortunately, because we've had a lot of turnover in senior management, I think you have a list of how many times and people have filled some of these top-level jobs. I'm the most senior-level person we have. I end up having a lot of knowledge because many of the others are gone. Doug's new in his job, I've got Dawn who's new with projections, so I'm the only person that knows how to do the allocations. We're in the middle of the budget cycle. The ERP needs a lot of work, we don't have a CIO. I, I'm still running the instructional side. You can't, it, it was only supposed to be for a short time, and I can't do it for more months, I can't expect my staff to do it for more months. So, with respect, I, the board just needs to make a decision, you know, they'll either continue me working here, or you won't. And that's okay, I support the board's decision, but a decision needs to be made, because if you're not going to put me in a position to hire people, then I need to move on, and the board needs to move on. And that's kind of where we are.
Okay, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Kennedy.
I, I want, Cindy, I think you know this already, but this, this suggestion is not because I question your ability or your leadership.
Right.
It's because I want you to come into this job on the best possible footing and not being undermined from day one. And, let me, let me repeat, let me rephrase, not come into this job as our new permanent superintendent with, with questions, constant, constant brow-beating and questioning, and my only idea, again, it was not, it was not to question your ability, it was just to, my question is of our process, and I wanted to provide, I believe this would provide the safest landing for the district and for you going forward, for the betterment of the, of the district as a whole.
Cynthia Saunders, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. And, Mr. Kennedy, I, I do feel that you're not speaking in terms of my ability or performance, you, you've told me what you feel of my performance, so I, I don't take it that way. But by doing that, it, it's, it's kind of a quasi-search, we're not calling it a search, but essentially that's what it is. I've said all along that I'm, I'm really not interested in participating in a search. If you want me to continue moving the district forward and, and being the superintendent, I will gladly accept the, the job. If you do not, I, I respect that decision as well, but I, I do think a decision needs to be made. It doesn't matter who you pick, you're never going to have 100% of the people support that decision, regardless of the process. So, you know, I, I've been here long enough where I think my work speaks for itself, and my performance speaks for itself. I've worked individually with each of you, so you all know me. So I do respect that you honor the wish of Reverend Golden, and you make a decision tonight.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments from the board, we are going to be adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.